Good morning and welcome to the May 3, 2017 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer for Sedgwick County. Commissioners, we have a full agenda this morning, however, I'd like to take this time to give you a few updates. Since we are in a new month, if your last names begin with the letters E, F, and G, it's time to renew your vehicle tags if they're registered in Sedgwick County. We have a few options to renew your tags. They can be renewed online, in person, or via US Post, and be sure to get those renewed by the end of the month. Also, May is American Stroke Month, and so from on Wednesday, May 10, May 17, and May 21, Sedgwick County is partnering with the American Heart Association and Wesley Medical Center to provide free blood pressure checks here at the Sedgwick County Courthouse. We will have booths available on the second floor of the courthouse here at 525 North Main. And with that, those are my announcements this morning, Chairman.
All right, thank you, Kate, and we also want to thank Wesley Hospital for providing those blood pressure checks. I think that is good service, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, we want to welcome everyone who's here in the room with us this morning, and also welcome those who are watching by way of television. And with that, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, May 3, 2017. Madam Clerk, first item.
invocation to be led by Pastor Dave Fulton, St. Paul's Lutheran Church. Please remain standing for the flag saluting.
Shall we pray? "O God, your grandeur is incomprehensible. Your Spirit energizes all of life. Energize this moment in which we gather, in which we pray. Holy One, grant energy and passion to all who serve in this public place. Grant us grace to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with you. As county leadership, county employees, and all who volunteer in county functions seek to assure quality public services that provide for the present and future well-being of the citizens of Sedgwick County. Holy One, open our eyes and hearts to the tragedy of substance abuse in our community. Grant us, all of us, a passion to understand Desmond Tutu's point. There comes a time when we need to stop pulling people out of the river. We need to go upstream and find why they're falling in, and to finish its thought to prevent them from falling in. Grant us the grace to be jolted by the statistic that 53,000 Americans died of substance abuse overdose this last year. Many of those were here, in our community, in our families. Empower each of us, in our own role in this community, to stand for prevention, to stand for justice, for kindness, and to walk humbly with you, as we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred. Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Fulton, thank you for being with us this morning. Next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Ransah.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Unruh.
Present. And next item.
Public Agenda.
We have had some folks sign up for Public Agenda, but I think that they are here to speak specifically to Agenda Item L, so we'll wait till that comes up, and then we'll ask them if they'd like to speak. So, next item.
Proclamations. Item A. Proclamation declaring Correctional Officers Week.
Commissioners, we have a proclamation, and I've asked Commissioner O'Donnell to read the first proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas in 1984, then-President Ronald Reagan signed Proclamation 5187, creating National Correctional Officers Week. The first full week in May has been since recognized as National Correctional Officers Week to honor the work of correctional officers and correctional personnel nationwide. And whereas the dedication of these correctional officers and detention deputies who serve our community quietly, taking on the very difficult and dangerous tasks and duties, and whereas we would be unable to operate our adult and juvenile detention facilities and community correctional programs without their hard work of these professionals, that these staff and they staff their facilities 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And whereas Sedgwick County, Kansas, is pleased to join in celebrating Correctional Officers Week, recognizing these men and women who risk their lives and serve so diligently and faithfully. Now therefore, be it resolved that David Unruh, Chair of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through 13, 2017, as Correctional Officers Week in Sedgwick County, and encourage all citizens to honor and show sincere appreciation for the correctional officers who make it possible to keep the detention and correctional facility safe each day.
Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. In receiving the proclamation this morning, Sheriff Easter is here.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioners, for recognizing the detention deputies and the correctional officers. We do appreciate it. It's sometimes a profession that goes a little bit unnoticed and sometimes a little bit underappreciated, but we do appreciate the fact that you've recognized the hard work that the men and women do inside the detention facility and also inside the juvenile detention facility, and we appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Well, Sheriff, thank you for your comments, and we agree that sometimes detention deputies and correctional officers are overlooked and underappreciated, but this is an opportunity for us to say that we do appreciate their service. We know that oftentimes they have sometimes personal exposure to harm, and seems like always exposure to litigation and those sort of things, but we know that they have to toe the line and are under a lot of pressure, and we truly appreciate their service, and hopefully this helps communicate that.
We'll communicate it. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next item, please.
Item B. Proclamation declaring Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce Day.
Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read for your consideration. Whereas May 7, 2017, marks the 100th anniversary of the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce, whose mission is to drive economic growth and community advancement in the Wichita region, and whereas the Chamber has served as a membership-based, nonprofit, community, and economic development organization with a vision to make the Wichita region the premier place to grow companies, careers, and communities, and whereas the Chamber has advocated for responsible business regulations and policies by working in cooperation with the public sector, in addition to providing opportunities to build business relationships that help members become more profitable and competitive, and whereas the Chamber has championed the community by attracting top talent, providing leadership development, and other educational opportunities for area businesses, and improving the quality of life. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, David M. Unruh, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 7, 2017, as Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce Day, and call upon the community to help me congratulate the Chamber leadership, volunteers, and members who have ensured the Chamber's success for the last 100 years and positioned it to continue to be an enduring presence that advocates for businesses in the region. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And here today to accept the proclamation is the Chairman/Executive Director, Gary Plummer, and also the Chairman of the Board, Scott Schwendeman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. Especially thankful that that did not die for the lack of a second. We're very excited to be here and celebrate with you 100 years of partnership between our organization and Sedgwick County. As we look back at our legacy over the last 100 years, there are many examples of projects and initiatives where we partnered with this body to try to make this community a better place, and I would just cite a couple of those with Intros Bank Arena, for example, was something that we supported, as well as the National Center for Aviation Training, airfares, fair airfares, I should say, and other initiatives that were public and private partnerships, and we think that our ability to sustain over 100 years is driven in many ways by our ability to partner with Sedgwick County. We are celebrating our 100th year of this year by doing some special initiatives, including refreshing the ground floor of our building that our forefathers built about 45 years ago, and we're excited about that project. We also have a couple of new initiatives that we think will create a lasting legacy dealing with inclusion and education. We would invite you to participate in the celebration later this month as we open the doors on that new facility, and again, I want to thank you on behalf of Chairman Schwendeman and our 1,825 members for all of your support for the last 100 years. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for those comments, Gary, and Scott. Did you want to say anything?
Sure. We appreciate, you know, Sedgwick County and the support you give to the Chamber. Only being involved with the Chamber now for about eight years, I've seen some great, you know, collaboration between the Wichita Chamber and Sedgwick County to achieve some of the things that Gary talked about, and we're looking for another 100 years of that cooperation moving forward to really advance our community here in the future. So again, thank you for the resolution. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you for those comments, and you made it clear you were not here at the beginning of the Chamber, you said.
No, no.
Okay. Well, excuse me, well, we truly appreciate the effort that our business partners in the communities, in collaboration with one another, work to make this a better place. Like you, we want our whole region to be a place where people choose to come to build their businesses and their families and make this a good place to live and work. So your efforts are not unrecognized, and so we really appreciate the collaborative effort of our private sector partners. So we're pleased to celebrate 100 years with you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks for the great work you do.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are, Gary, would you mind stepping back and introducing the rest of your staff that's here so that we have an idea of who your staff is to help make this successful?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that opportunity. In the front row, we have two members of our communications team, Angie Prather and Courtney Sendall, who are here with us today, and then sitting in the third row, we have Tony Porter, who is our new Director of Government Affairs for the Chamber.
Thank you. Well, it's good to have these folks introduced. I know that you'd probably admit that you don't make this all happen by yourself. You have help in doing this, right?
Yes, and I appreciate the reminder.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C. Proclamation declaring National Bike Month.
Commissioners, we have another proclamation, and I've asked Commissioner Dennis to read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita, Bike Walk Wichita, and other community partners have collaborated to recognize National Bike Month in our community, and whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans and is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of recreation and exercise, and whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users in an effort to reduce accidents and injuries, and whereas creating bicycle-friendly communities has been shown to improve residents' health and well-being, quality of life, community spirit, and reduction of pollution and congestion, now therefore be it resolved that David Unruh, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2017 as National Bike Month, and encourage the use of bicycles, as well as education about the ways to safely share the roads and walkways.
Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. What's the will of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And here today to receive the proclamation is Becky Tuttle. Good morning, Becky.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health members. Thank you for letting us be here today. We appreciate it. Sedgwick County is making great strides in making our community more walkable and bikeable. We know that not only walking and biking is good for health, but also for economic development. When we're looking to attract and retain young talent in our community, they're looking for opportunities to walk more and to bike more, so we appreciate all the efforts that are happening. Also, walking and biking is a significant contribution to our community to help people where they live, learn, earn, play, and pray. Many people in our community don't have alternative modes of transportation and rely on walking and biking to help them get to their job, to get to school, to get to medical appointments, and to be able to buy groceries. So having our community be safer for walking and biking is very important. I would encourage all residents to visit our Bike Month Wichita website. If you go to bikemonthwichita.org, you can find activities from the novice to the experienced cyclist, again, focusing on where people live, learn, earn, play, and pray, so there's many activities from youth all the way to faith-based initiatives. And then also, we have a special announcement tomorrow at 10:45. We hope for good weather. We'd like to see some sun. Tomorrow at 10:45 at the Pop-Up Park on Douglas, we are going to have a special announcement about ways that people in our community can continue to walk and bike in even more exciting ways. So thank you again for the opportunity, and happy Bike Month.
Well, Becky, thank you for being here, and we're pleased to make the proclamation. And your work with the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita is appreciated by your Board of Health, and we know that that's an effort by many collaborators who work together to make things happen, and this is just one of your events, but thank you for your efforts to help us be a healthier community.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item D. Resolution reappointing Kelly Arnold to the elected official position and Scott Hadley to the alternate department head position of Sedgwick County's Grievance Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, we have a number of appointments today, and as always, I'll try to group them together whenever possible. Item D is a resolution reappointing Kelly Arnold and Scott Hadley to the Sedgwick County Grievance Board. Mr. Arnold currently holds the elected official position on that board. Mr. Hadley currently holds the alternate department head position. We would be reappointing both of them for terms that expire May 5, 2019, and I would urge adoption of the resolution.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And I think neither Kelly nor Scott are present, so we'll go to the next item.
Item E. Resolution reappointing Kathy Feimster to the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disability Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor, item E, F, and G all pertain to the Sedgwick County Intellectual Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. Item E would reappoint Kathy Feimster to that position. She has been serving, and her term expired when Commissioner Peter John left the commission. Commissioner Dennis is recommending that she be reappointed for a term that ends May 2, 2021, and it's my understanding Ms. Feimster is present to be sworn. Item F would reappoint Mr. Greg Sullivan to the same board he is currently serving and is Commissioner Ransah's appointment. Commissioner Ransah is recommending a reappointment for a term ending May 2, 2021. He is also present to be sworn. And item G would appoint Ms. Kim Moore, I'm sorry, to the same board for the position that had been held by Reverend James Toth, who has resigned. Commissioner Howell is recommending the appointment of Ms. Moore for a term that expires April 18, 2021. Ms. Moore is also present, and I would urge adoption of all three of these resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve items E, F, and G.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, excuse me, go ahead.
And I want to thank Mr. Sullivan and all the other appointees for their willingness to serve on this board.
Okay, any other comment? And Madam Clerk, please call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And Rhonda Mullenkamp from the Clerk's office is here to swear these folks in, so if you'd want to step to the podium, she will do that.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and the state of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board, so help me God.
Are we supposed to say something? Thank you for appointing me, Mr. Dennis, and I've been on the board for a long time, and I want to encourage all citizens of Sedgwick County to see people with disabilities as people first, and that's pretty much what we work on on this board. Thank you. Thank you, Kathy. Greg, would you like to stand up?
Oh, not really, but, so, you know, Kathy is a parent, and I'm a parent of special kiddos, and so we weren't quite, we were given this opportunity, we didn't quite choose it, but it's just kind of how you take it, take the ball and run, and so, I don't know, it becomes all a part of your life, and I don't know, it's, the community has surrounded us and been heroes and angels for us, so it's my turn now to give back and help other families, so.
Thank you, Greg. And Ms. Moore, did you want to say anything?
Just thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Well, we would want you to know how much we appreciate your willingness to serve. This is an important advisory board, and I know that you all represent a constituency that really needs representation and your support, and we take Kathy, your encouragement to heart, that we want to be sensitive to these folks and look at them as just citizens in our community, and treat them with respect, so appreciate all your willingness to serve and appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Next item.
Item H. Resolution reappointing Catherine Hay to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
Mr. Chairman, item H and item I can be voted on together. Item H is a resolution reappointing Dr. Catherine Hay to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging. She is currently serving on that board. Commissioner Ransah is recommending that she be reappointed for a term that expires May 2, 2021. It's my understanding that she's, Dr. Hay is not present to be sworn in yet. Item I is an item accepting the resignation of Sandra Gritz from the Animal Care Advisory Board. She had been Commissioner Howell's appointment, but needed to step down, and I would urge adoption of that resolution.
All right, thank you.
Of both these resolutions, H and I.
All right, thank you. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve items H and I, and I'd like to thank Dr. Hay for her willingness to continue to serve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion. I'd like to just say I appreciate the service of Sandra Gritz. I understand that she's done a tremendous job. She's very passionate about the topic, but she also does work in the election office, and this year, I think, we've had either five or six elections, and there's more coming, so she's been very, very busy and has basically decided this is probably best for her to focus more on the election office and let someone else take the rein at the Animal Care Advisory Board. So I appreciate her service, and I wanted to say thank you to her, and I do support the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye. And next item, please.
New Business. Item J. Contract for Household Hazardous Waste Remote Collection Event on May 6, 2017, for the city of Colwich, Kansas.
Good morning, Commissioner Susan Earl and Wine, Director of Environmental Resources. Our department receives calls all the time and emails about how do I get rid of unused materials that we don't want anymore, whether that's used oil, paint that's leftover, cleaners that they don't like and don't want to use anymore, or other household chemicals. We tell these people about going to our Household Hazardous Waste Facility. It's located at 801 Stillwell, so open Tuesday through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturdays, 9 to 3. We also encourage them to go in and look at our swap area where they can pick up products that are in great shape for free from other people, so that they've brought in and they don't want anymore. So it's a nice system that we have, but we also want to better serve our community by going out into the community and offering remote collection events. We have our next collection event this Saturday in the city of Colwich. It'll be from 9:00 AM to noon, Saturday, May 6, at the Colwich Administrative Center. That's located at 310 South 2nd Street in Colwich. So we encourage anyone who lives in Colwich, the surrounding area, or any Sedgwick County citizen to come to this event. It looks like a great spring day this Saturday. Should be perfect for cleaning out the garage and taking the unwanted chemicals to the remote event in Colwich. The mayor of Colwich has signed the contract that's before you. I'd recommend your approval and ask the chairman to sign. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Susan, and I'd just like to say I appreciate your diligence in continuing each year to set up these remote collection sites. It seems to me that the citizens really take advantage of them, so we appreciate it. Commissioners, are there any question or comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is in my district coming up, and I do appreciate Susan and all the folks in public works that make this event happen. I know it takes a lot of work to make this happen, but it protects our environment, and I think that's critical, and I am very proud to recommend to make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Unruh.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next item.
Item K. Discussion of the Sedgwick County Zoo Executive Director Position.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Assistant County Manager for Public Services. This is a significant day in the history of the Sedgwick County Zoo. As you recall, after 27 years, Mark Reed, the former zoo director, retired in December of 2016. Beginning in September, after Mark announced his retirement, a search committee was formed to find the next zoo director. I was joined by Zoological Society members Mark DeVries, Sue Pierce, Jay Smith, Bill Wilson, Stan Andiel, and Sam Marnik, who served as the search committee chair. County HR Director Eileen McNichol provided us valuable guidance and assistance through this entire process. The search process- The search process began with a review of the job description and an identification of key competencies and skills that we were looking for in the ideal candidate. Stakeholder groups, including Zoo staff, Zoological Society, county commissioners and county staff, and Zoo benefactors, were surveyed to prioritize those key characteristics and competencies. Given that information, a job description was developed, or a job announcement was developed, and, and the job was advertised in a variety of different ways, including the county HR employment website, HRE Partners, other general and zoo-specific employment websites, and professional journals. With the help of county HR, applications were screened, and a pool of candidates was developed and invited for screening interviews that were conducted either in person or electronically over, over Skype. Based on those screening interviews, we then invited four candidates to come for a formal interview and presentation process, and that involved multiple interview panels. The search committee then solicited feedback from over 30 stakeholders that were involved in those processes, and we developed a recommendation that was presented to Zoological Society and to the commission. You may recall in the operating agreement, the, the agreement calls for both the county and the society to be in agreement on this selection. This thorough process has brought us to this point. I'm glad to recommend that you authorize the chair to sign an employment agreement with Jeffrey Etling, Ph.D., to serve as the next executive director of the Cedric County Zoo. The selection committee was impressed with Jeff's decades of experience as a curator and in zoo management positions, and he's got expertise in animal husbandry, safety, budget development and oversight, strategic planning, and more. Jeff is an experienced zoo professional. He's got 29 years of experience, 25 as a curator, and most recently as a curator of herpetology at the St. Louis Zoo. Jeff also has a connection to the Cedric County Zoo. He served as a curator here from 91 to 95. Jeff's an active professional fellow with the Association of Zoos and Aquariums organization, and he serves on several committees and advisory groups. He earned a Ph.D. in Ecology, Evolution, and Systematics at the University of Missouri-St. Louis, and he serves as Director of Conservation Programs in Western Asia for the Armenian Viper and in Missouri for the Hellbender species. I stand for any questions that you may have, but I'm really excited about this opportunity to bring the next Director of the Zoo into town and continue to move this, the zoo forward.
Okay, very good, thank you. We do have a comment from Commissioner Dennis.
No, I don't have questions. What I'd like to do is make a motion.
Very well.
I think this is a great day in the partnership that we have between the Cedric County Zoo and the county. The chairman and I had the opportunity to sit in on all four interviews of the individuals. We sat down on, at, we sat on those as county representatives. We also were able to sit in with the, with the Zoo Board as they interviewed the individuals. I think that this starts a great new chapter in the history of Cedric County Zoo, and I'm proud to, to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Zoo Board to appoint Dr. Jeffrey Etling as the new Zoo Director, the third Zoo Director, I think, in the entire history of the Zoo.
That's correct.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And is there any comment from Commissioners? I would, I would just like to add a comment that Commissioners did have an opportunity to interface with these candidates at a, at a larger group setting when the candidates made presentations that, that they created so that we would get to know them a little better. And I'm very satisfied with the process, and I'm completely confident in our new Zoo Director will do a great job for our community. Are there any other comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Thank you.
And thank you, and thanks to the Zoo Board for their hard work. Next item, please.
Item L, public hearing for road vacation pursuant to Charter Resolution Number 64.
Good morning, Jim Weber, Deputy Director of Public Works. I'm here this morning with Justin Wagner to present a request for vacation of a portion of 71st Street South, immediately west of 143rd Street East. I'll provide some background information, and Justin will provide information on the legal procedures that would apply to this type of vacation case. And after that, you'll need to hold a public hearing. The first map that you see up here shows the general area around 143rd Street East and 71st Street South. The property on the northeast corner of the intersection has been an airport for decades. The current owners have been working to improve the airport, expand commercial opportunities in the area, and develop the area adjacent to the airport for aviation-based residential uses. The area north of 71st Street South was platted in 2005 as a Downwind Estates addition. So a major component of their master plan has been to extend the length of the runway to allow for larger aircraft. They acquired the property to the south of 71st Street South and began working on zoning and plating to develop residential lots with access to the runway. Extension of the runway required crossing 71st Street South. So as part of their plan to close 71st Street South, they were required to construct a bypass route on the property to connect 71st Street South back up to 143rd, 143rd Street East. So that bypass route is the portion that's highlighted in yellow on the map, and that work was completed in this past December. Under state law, you can vacate a road or an easement through the plating process. So in this case, they own both sides of 71st Street South in the area that's highlighted in blue. The plat overlaps the red roadway, and the blue portion was officially vacated when the plat was filed with the Register of Deeds, and that also occurred back in December. So since that time, the west leg of the intersection of 71st Street South and 143rd Street East has been barricaded and closed to traffic. The remaining right-of-way is highlighted in red on this drawing, and it's around 400 feet long. This next map is a close-up of the intersection, so the red highlighting again is the area for which Public Works has initiated this vacation request. In preparing the case, we did identify two areas on 143rd for which right-of-way had been acquired for turn lanes that could be turned back over to the adjacent owners. So they've been included in the red highlighting along 143rd on this drawing. So we're talking about this sliver right up here and this little triangular piece down here. One more map. So this last map shows the detail of the area that to be vacated. There are different crosshatching patterns here that indicate the portions of the right-of-way that would go back to the adjacent owners. The road is no longer needed and is an unnecessary burden for either Rockford Township or Cedric County to maintain. Alternative routes exist for drivers on 71st Street South, and adjacent property owners all have access from 143rd Street East. And so unless you have questions for me, I'm going to turn it over to Justin so he can explain the legal stuff to you.
Okay, the legal stuff?
Legal stuff.
All right, thank you, good.
Good morning, Commissioners, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. As Jim Weber mentioned, this is a proposed vacation that's pursuant to Charter Resolution Number 64. The Board of County Commissioners set this public hearing today on March 15th, and pursuant to that Charter Resolution, notices were sent to the three adjoining property owners and also to the two townships. This road, this road is actually on the border of two different townships, so it was sent to both of the townships as well so that they could show up to this hearing and provide any input that they may, may wish to do. On the road vacation matters, the Board of County Commissioners, in order to actually order a vacation, has to make four separate findings. The first is that all the required notices are provided. Those notices were included in the backup materials in this agenda item. The second is that the road does not provide any public utility by reason of neglect, non-use, or inconvenience, or other cause or causes. The third is any present or future public utility does not justify the expenditure of necessary funds to repair the road or put it in the condition for public travel. And then the fourth and final finding would be that the public will not suffer any unreasonable loss or inconvenience, and no private rights will be endangered or injured. If any of those four findings are not made, then a vacation would not be ordered in this matter. I essentially have three different options on this. The first is to make findings to order the vacation. As Jim indicated, the underlying property go back to the property owners identified. The second would be to make findings not to order the vacation. And then the third would be to refer the matter to the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission for their review and, and consideration. If you did take that third option, I would still suggest that you would hold the public hearing today on this item as it has been noticed up for all the parties. Any action can be taken on this by a simple majority vote. And with that, the recommended action from county staff is to make findings to order the vacation of the roadway. And then, prior to opening the public hearing, I would make the suggestion that if any Commissioners have had any ex parte contacts in this matter, they would disclose those so the parties have an opportunity to respond to any, any of that material.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? And does anyone have ex parte communications that they need to reveal? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to, I guess, report, I've been familiar with this project out at Crossman's Aviation for a number of years, and I think over the years I have talked with probably everybody that's part of this in one way or the other. I don't remember any specific conversations with the two landowners to the south of 71st Street. I, I do know that I have spoke with the other gentlemen that own the area, area to the north of 71st. However, we have not talked about this specifically, and other than the fact that they told me they would be here today, and I think they've got some kind of a proposal for some type of a gate or something. They're talking about going across 71st Street, which I think they may talk about here today. But other than that, I would just say I don't, I don't believe any conversation I've had will influence any decision that I'm going to make. And I don't remember any, any specific discussions with the, either the, any of the owners regarding whether this is a good action for us today or, or what we should take, what action we should take today. So if you want to just report the fact this is in my district, and, and because it's such been, it's been such a long process to get to this point, I have, I have had probably numerous conversations over the years regarding the entire project, and I don't know how, how else to report that. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see any other Commissioners asking to speak, and so I think that we take that as indication that there has been no ex parte communication. And I don't see Commissioners asking for a question. So with that, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who has a comment they wish to make that now is an appropriate time to do that. And Mr. Thomas and Mr. Cook, I know you each wanted to make a statement, so... Could you state your name and address?
Gregory Owen Thomas, 6821 South 143rd Derby, Kansas. And I made some little, or Steve made some little maps to kind of discuss what we'd like to do. Number one, we're all in favor of closing this portion of 71st Street. Allows the county to get rid of a dead-end road. Our proposal, though, is rather than have the county build a berm, I've kind of drawn a map out there, or Steve has. We would like to put in a 20-foot gate, and we will supply that gate and build it. If the county gives us their five signs, we'll hang their little red road closure signs on the gate, and would move that gate back on our side of the county right-of-way. I think there's 60 feet of right-of-way between the center line and, and where the road vacation starts. What this allows is we, we just, as discussed, we just completed about, right at a million dollars worth of work, extending the runway, rerouting the county road. And, and part of that project was we put in a new fuel farm right there north of this area that you're vacating, and we bring semis in and out on 71st Street to offload fuel. So there is some benefit to us to leave, leave the road as is and close it with a gating system rather than build a berm and make it a permanent closure. And, and also future construction, that's kind of a staging area there that we bring construction equipment in. But other than that, unless you've got any questions, I don't have anything else to add for input.
I don't see any questions right now, so thank you for those comments, and... Did you want to make another comment?
I just want to say thanks to everybody here for helping support us. Okay. My name's Steve Logan, I'm at 6841 South 143rd Street East, Derby, Kansas. I'm one of the co-owners of the airport, and we want to thank you for your support and everything that we've done in the last couple of years. It's been a long battle, but we've got there. But I also want to tell you that you've made a very safe airport now. You've gotten it away from the end of the roads. It's, we've got lots of clearance now. It's, it's a lot safer place to fly into, and I love, we've had a lot of interest. So hopefully, we'll get down the road and have more homes in there and create a, a better gated community for, for the airport and the society. So just wanted to let you know we appreciate your, your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't see any questions right now. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this? No one else is moving towards podium, so with that, I will close the public hearing and restrict the comments to the bench. And I suppose I have one, one question, Justin, is...
Sure.
The, the plans for the, for the gates, for them to get through and just continue their operation. We don't have to approve that. I mean, they can do that by right on their own.
That's correct. I don't think there's any issues with that, and I believe Public Works is also okay with the, what was mentioned on the record.
Okay, good, thank you. Commissioners, any other comment or question? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions, and I may make a motion here, excuse me. Just wanted to verify, the legal publication was in fact made, so people were notified of this hearing today? Would confirm that?
There, let me double-check on the Charter Resolution. I don't believe there's a requirement of legal publication for these. It's just a requirement for notice being mailed. And in this case, that notice, actually, it was published, I apologize. And I believe that's in the backup materials. I don't have that in front of me at this second. But it was published, is my understanding.
Another question. Did this, did this have to go to MAPC?
It did not have to go to MAPC under the Charter Resolution, because some vacations actually go to MAPC, some road vacations and things along those lines. This Charter Resolution for this type of roadway vacation in the unincorporated area of the county does not have to go to the MAPC. You certainly have the option of referring it there.
Well, I guess, okay, so let me just say, I, I think when we take property that had a, a public, a public use, and today doesn't seem to serve any public use, I think the vacation and turning this back over to private property owners is, is the right thing to do. To the extent, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, why I could not support the, the vacation of this road and hand this back to the private property owners. And no one's, no one has made an argument to me that I can think of that, that would challenge that in any way. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we would, that we would support the vacation of this road as well as, I'd like to make the following findings. All required notices under the Charter Resolution 64 were provided. The road does not provide any public utility due to non-use, inconvenience, and, and prior rerouting and vacation of 71st Street South to the west of this location. Let me add further, I guess I'll interject in my motion here, that I believe this actually makes it more clear. When you drive around there, it, right now, it kind of looks like it's a leg of, of an intersection. I think having this, having this gate would probably help the public realize this is, this is not a public, not a public road. And so I think that actually probably helps a little bit. So I kind of like the proposal that they brought to us this morning. Number three, that any future or present public utility does not justify the expenditure of necessary funds to continue to repair the road and keep, keep it in condition for public travel. And then finally, the public will not suffer any unreasonable loss or inconvenience, and no private rights will be endangered or injured. Let me add, I think that, that I think the people ought to have their, their property back when it serves on public use. And so I think this is a, a wise motion this morning, and I would urge you to adopt. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Is there any further comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Jim, gentlemen, thank you for being here this morning. Next item, please.
Item M, consideration of grant in the amount of $119,000 for Title II funding.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Stephen Stonehouse from the Division of Corrections. The United States Department of Justice, Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention provides funds to states to help implement comprehensive juvenile justice plans. The Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services has funding available through this program to address one of OJJDP's purpose areas. The Division of Corrections is proposing a grant application to address... The Division of Corrections is proposing a grant application to address disproportionate minority contact in the juvenile justice system in Sedgwick County. DMC grants fund programs, research, and other initiatives to address the disproportionate number of minority youth who come into contact with the juvenile justice system. From 2008 to 2011, Sedgwick County and the Division of Corrections were involved in a DMC grant through the MacArthur Foundation. During this project, the Haywood Burns Institute was enlisted to assess and provide technical assistance to the department and community stakeholders. This initiative resulted in a reduction in reliance on security attention for sanctions, decreased arrests for targeted offenses committed by minority youth, and a reduction for all youth from misdemeanor offenses at USD 259 schools. Since the end of that initiative to now, there remains work to do to address DMC, specifically addressing youth in the deep end of the system. Minority youth are overrepresented at the point of arrest for and commission of violent and serious crimes, and spend longer in detention for these crimes than their white counterparts. This grant request aims to explore current data and begin to understand why disproportionality exists at these two deep endpoints of contact for minority youth. We are requesting $69,000 for intensive site engagement with the Burns Institute to provide an updated assessment and technical assistance to engage community stakeholders to understand the issue and support our work to address DMC. Currently, the Corrections Division relies on nine separate databases and hundreds of man-hours collecting and analyzing data. The current system is burdensome, duplicative, and inefficient. With this grant, we are additionally requesting $50,000 to aid in the purchase of a new single database for the division to improve our data collection abilities. Excuse me. The total amount of this grant is $119,000 and contains no personnel expenditures or match requirements. We have presented this proposal to the Sedgwick County Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, and they have issued a letter of support for this project. We request authorization to submit this grant application and authorize the chair to accept any funding if awarded. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Steve, thank you. Commissioners, is there any comment or question? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Mr. Stonehouse's presentation this morning, and I've talked to him a number of times about some of the, some of the services we provide, or try to implement here in Sedgwick County to help our youth that are maybe having trouble, or are getting involved in our juvenile detention programs and that type of thing. And I appreciate the fact that we've got a, a pretty good system, but to the extent that there may be some disproportionate things, I think we need to understand that, and I think we ought to be aware of that if that, if that's going on. So, I am pleased to make a motion this morning, and I'd make a motion we do approve the application for the grant, and, and if awarded, authorize the acceptance of the grant as established, and establishment of budget authority as provided in the financial considerations section of this request.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from Commissioners? I don't see any. This is an item that may provoke some comment from the public. Is anyone from the public who wants to comment on this? Seeing none, then, Madam Clerk, we'll ask you to call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Enrew?
Aye.
Steve, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item N, presentation of the quarterly financial report.
Thank you, Kate, sorry. Kate and I were playing battling mouses there, trying to open up the presentation. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Rick Nirmier, Deputy Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here to present to you the quarterly financial report for the results of the first quarter FY 2017 that ended 31 March. As you know, at the end of each quarter, the Department of Finance reports on Sedgwick County's financial condition, and this quarterly report provides an analysis of that quarter. The information contained in this report is based on unaudited financial statements and excludes any adjustments that may be required by the county to auditors at a later date. So, we begin with, if we look at what the projected ending fund balances will be by fund type. So, we begin with the general fund. And again, remember, this is the county's primary operating fund and accounts for services that do not have a designated fund of their own. General fund includes most general government and law enforcement functions, and currently the operation of 42 divisions are funded from the general fund. Revenues are expected to exceed expenditures, and the, there's a net change in fund balance of $291,000 that will result in an ending fund balance of 62 million, 62.8 million. Then as we move across the right, and we go to debt service, again, we have revenues, we list revenues, expenditures, what our net income is. The transfers, then the net change in fund balance of $228,000, and then that results in an ending fund balance of $3 million. And we move to other tax-supported, those special revenue funds that are property tax-supported. The county has seven other property tax-supported funds. That's bond and interest, EMS, comm care, aging, highway, noxious weed in Wichita State. Each fund provides services related to a specific function, and the property taxes levied in each fund are used only to support those functions I listed. So as you see there, we project a net change of $4 million, which, and that leaves us an ending fund balance of also about $4 million. So as we move to the right, we move into non-property tax funds. The county has 31 budgeted other operating funds that are not supported with property taxes. These funds are estimated to decrease by approximately 1.5 million in combined fund balance, and have a projected ending fund balance of $29.4 million. Sedgwick County Fire District One is a distinct governmental entity that is operated as part of Sedgwick County Government, and levies property taxes and is reported separately. So as you can see here, we have a net change, a projected net change in fund balance of about $330,000 that will result in an ending fund balance at the end of 2017 of $3.6 million. I've added to this from, in the past, we haven't seen the enterprise and internal service funds, but this chart now matches what is actually on page six of your quarterly report. So you can see I've added the enterprise and internal service funds, which is fleet, risk management, and then the enterprise fund is the arena. So, when we look at all of this, and we report on financials, we're looking at total governmental funds, which includes all of these funds. So if we look at the total government fund, on the far-right column, there you can see that we're projecting a net change in fund balance, when we take all of these into account, of 4.3 million change, and that will give us an ending fund balance for all of these combined of $137 million. So now let me get into some of the specifics of the, of the funds. So, the county property tax-supported funds. First quarter net revenues were $102.3 million. And we saw increases in property tax of 2.8 million, and licenses and permits of $2 million from MABCD. And I go into specifics as we go through this slide presentation. Again, county property tax-supported funds. This is a general fund plus all other property tax-supported funds. End of first quarter expenditures totaled $69 million. And the bulk of those increases are in contractuals and commodities due to the increased use of shopping carts in the way that we're doing purchases through purchasing and accounting. So when they use that, it, it actually shows an increase in the use of funds because they're blocking that amount of money for the entire year. Is that clear on, on the increased use of shopping carts? I know I've said that in past presentations, and I'm not sure that I explained it well enough, so you understood what I was talking about. So, this represents a percentage change, as you can see, 4.4% increase in revenues, 12.8% in expenditures. And this is just a net of that, so it shows what the net increase is. So the net increase is 33.3, or an increase of over what we were at 2016. Again, like I said, I was going to go into some of the specifics of the revenues. So these are the top 10 revenues of county property tax-supported funds. Again, I mentioned that there was an increase in property taxes, and that's represented here, that 3.8% increase in property taxes. Also, increases in sales and use taxes of 1%. Special County and Highway Fund, I'm just kind of running down the list here, looking at some of the highlights, 3.9%, or that was administrative reimbursements. The County Highway Fund is 8.6%, Medicaid fees 8.9%, prisoner housing, an increase of 18%. And as you can see on that bottom line, all revenues, including transfers, 4.3 million dollar increase, or 4.4%. Key personnel expenditures. Personnel is the largest single category of expense that we incur here at the county. The 4% increase that you see on the top line there is attributed to targeted pay adjustments, and of course, the pay pool, because this is the first quarter, so those increases will reflect in January. Pension contributions are down as a result of actions taken by capers, and the FICA increase obviously would correspond with the increase in salaries. Key non-personnel expenditures. Listed here are some of the other additional non-personnel expenditures. Grant awards include payments to Exploration Place, WATC, Wichita State Mill Levy, Extension Council payments, MAD, MAPD payments, et cetera. There are others. But that increase that you see there of nearly $2 million, or 45%, is in contractuals in aging and comm care grants. Yes, sir?
Can you go back one slide? I'm sorry. Right there.
Nope, that's the same slide. There we go.
All other expenditures. Look at that line there.
Yep.
.68 to .9, that shows a decrease of .17.
You're right. That's a mistake on my part.
Okay. So is the bottom 3.6 correct, or? Yeah, I mean, that should have a... You can update it and send it to us later, I guess.
I will do that. That's right, it's, that's wrong. Yep. The, the numbers in the first quarter, second quarter, the .9 is correct. It's the dollar change and the percent changes are wrong.
So it actually went up?
That's correct.
Thank you. Sorry, it took me a minute to process that and make sure I was seeing it right. Okay.
I, I put that in there on purpose to see if anyone would catch it.
He thought you had it passed me for a minute, no?
Way to go, Richard.
I was awake.
Good morning. All right, so let's see, where was I? We would have been here. Apologize for that. So we were discussing the grant award increase there. Those are due to contractuals in aging and comm care. And also, you'll see there's an increase in fleet management charges. Those are for some vehicles purchased for sheriff that had, that attributed to that increase. Software and hardware maintenance shows a, a large percentage increase. That's due to maintenance contracts in IT. We move now to non-tax special revenue funds. And I stated at the beginning of the presentation that the county has 31 operating funds which are not supported directly with property taxes. In these non-tax special revenue funds, you can see revenues are slightly up from, in the first quarter, from 16 to 17. Expenditures, there's a spike there, as you can see, that's also due, again, like I said before, to fleet and aging, senior centers, Meals on Wheels, and other aging programs which are the cause of that spike. So here's the year-over-year first quarter. We see a 2% increase in revenues and that 21% increase in expenditures. Boy, I am struggling with the technology this morning. Here are the top 10 revenues in the non-tax special revenue funds. And as you can see, there's a lot of red in there for decreases. But again, only a 2.2% increase overall. Key expenditures, and there you see, there's the large percentage increase in grant awards, that 107%, and then the management services, as I spoke to earlier, with the Meals on Wheels, aging. So we move away now from the budgetary statements into what the second part of the, the quarterly presentation, or the quarterly report. Actually, it shows the county finances in a manner similar, similar to a private sector business, and it's based on GAAP standards. What this chart shows is a clear pattern. As you can see, the first quarter numbers are annotated in red. And what this shows is the total fund balance by quarter. So you can see the tax collection cycle, obviously, in the first and second quarters. Our revenues go up, and then we spend that down as we go through the rest of the year. So what this shows is a very narrow range of pattern that our fund balance in the first quarter is in line with the past five years. Same data shown differently. This is a percentage, and recall, the county has a fund balance policy that states that unrestricted general fund balance to be at least 20% of budgeted expenditures. So, not unlike the previous slide, you can see the pattern where the revenues come in in the first and second quarter, and then we draw that down to the third and fourth quarter. But again, very narrow range on the first quarter, so we're the, at 48% of unrestricted balances of percentages of budgeted expenditures. We move now to the investment portfolio. So the total portfolio represented by the brown bars there, again, there's a clear pattern as you look back over the past five years. The yield is represented by the blue bar with the blue data points, and then our benchmark is represented by the dashed green line. As you can see right now, our yield is below what our benchmark is. Well, that's a result of the Fed changing the rate, and the benchmark is 1.08%, and our yield's at .97%. So as, as investments mature, and we're able to reinvest those, we'll see that turn. Some significant capital projects that are underway. The Ronald Reagan Building renovation. Bids, renovation bids have been received, and they are scheduled for bid board tomorrow, and you will see those on your agenda next Wednesday. Law enforcement training center, construction is underway and will be complete in 2018. Most of the legal documents, I've been told, have been completed and are in place. Construction of a new southeast EMS post. The, all the walls are up. Exterior paving and door installations are to start next, and then the final completion is on, on, to be July 30th, and that's on time.
That, that committed there on the law enforcement training center probably should be, what, 2.42? Not 242 million?
It's 242,000.
Oh, okay. Okay.
No M there.
No, no M there.
No M there.
No. Nothing after, okay. Not $242, okay.
Nope.
Got it.
It is $242.
Oh, it is $242, not thousands. Okay, all right, good.
That one's right.
All right.
I was at the interchange at 235 and 54. Obviously, anybody who travels west knows that is going on. That construction began in late '15 and will continue until the summer of 2019. Obviously, there was a good winter for contractors to work with few interruptions. Obviously, there was a good winter for contractors to work with few interruptions. The most visible components under construction right now are the bridge piers that will support a third level ramps to move traffic from southbound 235 to eastbound 54. The next traffic change will occur next week when the westbound ramp from 54 to West Street will be closed until November. And the last one is the bridge on 61st Street North. That road was reopened to traffic on March 13th, and final work and cleanup was completed in April. So now taking a look at some of the fiscal stresses that we see. We look at liquidity, which is the number of days cash on hand in the general fund. That's up to 138 days over 2014... or over 2015, rather. Flexibility. That's the unrestricted balances a percentage of expenditures, up 2 percent from last year. Our property values increased, and that's a taxable value per capita. That's an increase over last year. Our per capita debt decreased over last year. Our debt burden remains flat. Our effective property tax rate is slightly down, so I call that flat. And property tax reliance, that's a levy as a percentage of government fund expenditures, also remains flat. This is a snapshot of the leading economic indicators. This information is from the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State. And as you can see, it's just kind of a slow, steady increase, and just kinda... just hangs around. There's nothing... no big increases. So some key metrics, looking at long-term trends in our economy. We see a spike in our tax base growth from 2015 to '16, a 2.8 percent. We see an increase of home sales. We see an increase in new home permits. Mortgage is registered, and the sales and use tax up. And the unemployment rate is essentially flat. So what do we see as some of the potential threats to the county? Obviously, what we see here is all of these things are external threats. The unknowns of the federal budget as we have continuing resolutions to keep operating. The state budget, projected deficits, and the unknowns there. And then, obviously, the local economy, as shown by that leading indicator, is that slow recovery, or slower than a national recovery. Some key points. No projected deficits in the general fund in 2017. So Cedric County is currently in sound financial condition. The loss of mortgage registration fee revenue. And again, we've been talking about that mortgage registration fee revenue being reduced and then phased out. But then there's a slight increase in officer fees, but those increases in the officer fees don't offset completely the loss of the mortgage registration fee. So while revenue grows modestly, the cost of doing business continues to increase. And an example here is that we've talked about convenience fees that we charge for the use of credit cards, but we're charged a merchant service fee. And right now, just the cost of doing business increases, and we're not keeping up with that. So the county focus reflects continued emphasis on core services, reduce funding to government services that can be provided by other government or private entities. So through the first quarter, the financial performance is consistent with what we expected. We reflect strong financial position. There's no deficit projected in 2017. And the county focus is to use a strategic plan as a roadmap for success. Any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any comment or questions? I don't see any, Rick.
That's good.
Yes, we have. Comment from Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on the mortgage registration fee issue that's been...
Yep.
Kind of evolving over the last few years, that law, I had to think, several years of implementation. Where are we on that implementation process? Are we fully implemented?
No.
Or is there still work to go?
The complete phase-out will be 2019.
Okay. And just because that is a factor, I was wondering if there's a way we can get kind of maybe a separate report on what it used to be and kind of where we are now, and where do we expect to go. I have not looked at that in a long time. I'd like to kind of know how we're doing based on our, you know, prior estimates and are things as we thought they would be? Are they different? It'd be nice to see that. That's really probably my only comment. I think I want to say thank you for the report. I think you did a good job. I'd like to make a recommendation that we do receive and file, the quarterly financial report.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second from Commissioner Ranzau. Is there any comment or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Mr. Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Chairman Henry.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item.
Item O, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting of April 27, 2017.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. At our regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of April 27, we reviewed and recommend five items for your consideration this morning. Item number one is the 2017 Asphalt Surface Recycling and Paving for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the bid from Cutler Repaving Incorporated in the amount Item number two is the 2017 Painted Pavement Marking Project for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Road Safe Traffic Systems Incorporated in the amount of $474,614. Item number three is the 1-ton truck for Fleet Management, and this recommendation is to accept the low responsive bid from Marshall Motor Company Incorporated in the amount of Item number four, current model 350 HD EL XL Transit Van for Cedric County Fire District, number one. And this recommendation is to accept the bid from Rusty Eck Ford in the amount of $37,607. And item number five is the slip-in pump and tank units for Cedric County Fire District, number one. And this recommendation is to accept the bid from Emergency Fire Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $42,302. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Okay, Joe, thank you. We do have a comment from Commissioner Ranzau.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept the report of the bids and contracts, with exception of item number three, which I'd like to discuss that.
Thank you. I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
And Chairman Henry.
Aye. So now we need to discuss item number three of the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts. Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, there was one that was from Pemberton that was about $3,000 cheaper, $3,500. I guess I'd like to have a discussion about that.
We'll provide you with some details, Ms. Penny Pollenwell.
Good morning, Penny Pollen, Fleet Management. Thank you. That vendor did not meet specifications. The wheelbase and the engine size are what we're requesting.
Okay. And does that really... the difference really matter all that much?
The difference is in the way that Public Works uses this vehicle. They're going to be using it to do a lot of road repair. So they haul a lot in the bed of the truck, so they need a heavy-duty truck.
And what was proposed as not a heavy-duty truck? I mean, what truck was proposed versus the one that...
We requested a 6.2 engine. And they submitted a 6.0.
Okay. And is...
The difference in that engine is in the horsepower and also the GVW. The 2017 Ram, which was our recommendation, has a rating of 16,000 pounds, while the truck that Pemberton recommended has a rating of 13,450 pounds. So basically, Public Works is going to be using that for a lot of heavy-duty hauling, and we need that extra payload for them to do their job that won't put a lot of work on the engine. So it needs to be a bigger engine.
I don't know if it's capable, so...
And also, I mean, there are differences in the horsepower and the torque as well.
Yeah.
So it's just performance issues.
So what was the truck that was recommended?
The 2017 Ram.
Okay. And what was this one that was...
It's a Silverado truck.
Uh-huh.
It's just a heavier truck. I mean, you also get... you get better tires, better suspension. You're not going to put that much of... It's going to push the engine to its maximum, so we want the bigger engine to begin with so that we're not... we have the smaller engine, there could be maintenance issues if we're pushing it.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I say a couple words?
If you would, please.
David Spears, I can see this is a little bit of a problem. You know, just let me say, I know where you're coming from, Commissioner, and you too, Commissioner Dennis. Throughout the years on these... you end up, when you send out a set of specs, you have to send out something. So if... let me just give you an example. So if we say a 6.2, a vendor might want a bid of 6.0. If we say a 6.0, he might want a bid of 5.8, if there would be such... if you spec a 5.8, he'd want a bid of 5.6. They do that so they can get a lower bid in and get the bid. And that's some things we've noticed over the years. So I just wanted to throw that out for thought also.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I have talked to Joe Thomas and to Fleet Management about this a little bit, because I was concerned when I first took a look at it. They did send me quite a bit of information. I think they infoed all of the Commissioners on the information that they provided. But again, my real concern was to make sure that when we're writing the specifications, that we don't write it so that it has to have a blue oval on the front, you know, or it has to have a Ram on the front. I want to make sure that whatever specifications that we choose are really specifications that we need. You know, if it needs more power than what that gas engine has, and why, maybe we need to specify that it has to have a diesel engine in it instead of a gasoline engine. But if... 2/10 of liters, not very much. But I understand that this Ram that you chose has an awful lot more horsepower than that 6.0 Chevy. It's got a lot more power to carry what you need to be able to carry. I just want to make sure that when Public Works or any of our different divisions are writing a specification, that they don't write it so that it has to meet a certain vehicle, that a number of vehicles can meet that. And I understand what David said, that if we specify a 6.2 and they offer a 6.0, sometimes they could offer a 5.8 or something like that. But we want to be good stewards of what the taxpayers are doing. After talking with the folks, I accept what you've put down. And I honestly don't care if it's a Chevy or Ford or a Ram, whatever that you choose. What I want to make sure of is that we specify what we really need, that it doesn't go directly to a certain make or model of a vehicle, and that we get the best deal that we can get for our taxpayers.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranzau?
Did we have a horsepower requirement in the bid?
No, we did not.
We did not? Okay. What? Do we know why not, then, if that's...
Usually, that's tied to the engine size, which is why we specified a 6.2 as a minimum specification.
Did we have a capacity requirement? Carrying capacity requirement in the...
We did not, but we will from here on out. We'll include the GVW.
Well, I'd like to have some flexibility in those... I'd like to have some flexibility. I know you've got to put some numbers down, but I think we should have some flexibility as well. Anyway, okay. That's all. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I'll be supportive of the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts. I mean, I'm... we have to buy a vehicle that's going to be able to do the work that we intend to do. And it seems like tires and chassis and load carrying capacity, this satisfies that. So, you know, we... I don't think anybody wants to be foolish with taxpayer money, but I think this is a piece of equipment that will accomplish the job that we want to use it for. So I'll be supportive of it. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious if... I mean, this is Rusty Eck Ford here, I guess, in Wichita. It's the recommended. They... I would think that they would have other vehicles besides this Ram available to offer. I'm curious, does any vendor ever offer a 6.0 that's a Ram and maybe a 6.2 that's something else? I mean, did they ever offer more than one vehicle, or they just simply offer the one that did not meet the spec? I mean, it seems like they would be... if they're trying to get a lesser bid, I think they might actually bid more than one different vehicle and say, here's a couple of options. But they... does anybody ever do that type of thing? Offer more than one option?
And actually, just a correction, Rusty Eck isn't the recommended vendor.
Okay. The recommended is the...
Marshall.
Marshall. I got that now. Okay, thank you.
We have had some specifications in the past where vendors have given us options. Usually, it's when we ask them for different alternatives.
I guess I'm curious, you know, the other suppliers, you know, if they knew that the minimum was 6.2, I'm wondering, do they have something in their fleet that would be something they could have offered that would be 6.2? Or they just don't have anything in their fleet that would be close to the 6.2? I don't know why they would offer something less than 6.2. I mean, did they have, I guess, I'm questioning if someone did have that option, why they wouldn't have offered that as an alternate bid? We don't know.
Well, my guess would be that they wanted to be the low bid, so they offer a lower truck.
All right. Well, that's all my question.
A smaller truck.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, I'll make a motion that we approve item three of the recommendations of the Boards of Bids and Contracts.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that. But again, I want to make sure that when we're putting our bids out, that we know what our requirements are, because Chevy, I don't believe, makes a 6.2 gas engine, they make a 6.0. So make sure that we're looking at what we can get when we're putting those requirements out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there further comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just say, I'll probably support the motion, only because it's the only one that actually did meet the only spec we put out. But I agree with Commissioner Dennis, we ought to be, you know, maybe put out a preference. I don't know how you do that. Personally, I would like to accept the one that's 6.0, because I think that's probably a reasonably good vehicle. But to the extent that it doesn't meet the only spec we put out, I guess I'll support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ranzau?
With respect to the horsepower and other things, I don't necessarily want us to get even more specific moving forward, but I guess the point is, if we... I mean, we're making a decision based upon things that we didn't have an absolute requirement, so I think we need to have a range and have a little... I don't know how we do that legally, but we've got to have a little flexibility, I think, for some of these decisions, I've stated.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
And Chairman Henry?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve Consent Agenda item as pop up through Yankee. So moved?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Chairman Henry?
Aye.
And next item.
Legislative Issues.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Von Ashen, Assistant County Counselor. Kind of to piggyback Rick Durham's presentation. This week, next week, probably for the remainder of the session, the major work's going to be done on the next two years' budget cycle. It appears that they're going to make another run at the tax increase for income taxes and eliminating the LLC and sole proprietorship exemption. That may happen this week. And then school finances on the board, probably Monday or Tuesday of next week is when that may hit the House. So when it comes to looking at our overall financial forecast and how dependent is upon the state, those are the items that we'll keep an eye on to see if they can raise enough revenue to meet what their budget expenditures are going to be. As of right now, it appears that even with the tax increase that they're looking at, that they will fall short, and there's going to have to be cuts. at, that they will fall short. There's going to have to be cuts somewhere, and it's probably going to be somewhere in the area of services. So we'll keep an eye on that. The other thing that I'm particularly keeping an eye on is Senate Bill 86. Doug King and I have talked about this. This bill is going to change the Open Records Act. There'll be some significant changes. Records, at least for Kansas citizens, will remain open. I don't think there's going to be any further exemptions that hinder what records we can get, but they are moving, there is a movement to go to citizen-only requests. That will be optional. So if we have somebody request information from out of state, and they're not doing so on behalf of a Kansas citizen, we'd still have the option to provide the information. And for a lot of people who are former residents of Sedgwick County, who may not have somebody here that could request a record, obviously, we would help those individuals find whatever records that they would need. But we're keeping an eye on that. It's passed the Senate, it's in the House. I expect it to get to the House floor and to pass, and then we will look at whatever additional training we will need to do to make sure that all of our core coordinators know what the changes are, and then whatever changes that we need to implement as far as any additional forms or affidavits, we will take care of that. Doug King and I will work on that. With that, I stand for any questions.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Are there any questions? I don't see any, so thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Other?
Commissioners, are there other items that you'd like to discuss here at the end of our meeting? I don't see anyone requesting to speak, so we do need an executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 30 minutes to consider consultation with an attorney for this commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship with preliminary discussions relating to the acquisitions of real property, and that this executive session return to this room no sooner than 11:06. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and public interest, and to protect the county's financial investment and the right to confidentiality of its negotiating position.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call a vote.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Chairman Howell? Or, excuse me, Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
And Chairman Enry?
Aye.
Sorry.
We are recessed to executive session.